Colleagues, to start the live stream please in five, four, three, two, one. Thank you. Right, good evening everyone, my name is Peter Sutton from Democratic Services and a clerk to this meeting and I'll just give some housekeeping instructions before the meeting starts. There's Covid safety measures in place in the building which includes a one-way system, also distance seating as we will see, and you're requested to wear face covering if you can when you're moving around the building. There's no fire alarm scheduled for this evening, so if the fire alarm does sound, we need to vacate using the marked exits and the congregation points us to the rear of the building on exchange flags. There's toilets, including accessible toilets in the corridors to my right. If you're invited by the chair to speak, can you please use the microphones? Turn any mobile devices to silent please. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Peter. Can I welcome everyone to the meeting tonight and a special welcome to those who may be watching by live stream. Can we note we've had apologies from councillor Linni Higgin, Liz Makinson and advisory members Rob Tad, Amina Elmy and Paul Sherpo. Are there any other notifications and apologies please? Nope, thank you. Can I therefore invite members and officers to introduce themselves and I think we will start on the left-hand side and go back row and work forward and then we'll do similar on... Did I say left hand then? Yeah, right-hand side, starting at the back. So if we could start with Billy on the back row first please, thank you.
Thank you. It's Billy Lake, councillor for Chubruke and Stormycroft.
Barbara May, councillor for Walton.
Liam O'Toole, senior clerk, Democratic Services.
Kimberly Berry on council for Arlington and Woodcross.
Angela Coleman councillor for Waitevile Board.
Lilla Bennet councillor for West Derby Ward.
Nick Small councillor for Central Ward.
Maria Lawrence vice-chairman Liverpool Parent Care Forum.
Donna Phipps Chair and S E N D Lead for Liverpool Parent Care Forum.
Hi, October Wright Deputy Head Teacher of King David High School.
Trace Gore advisory member.
Jonathan Jones Director of Education.
Steve Ray, Director of Children's Services.
And councillor Tom Logan in Cabinet Member for Education Employment and Skills.
Next item is declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations this evening please? Nope, non-recorded, thank you. Therefore we'll go on now to the minutes of the last meeting and these are on pages one to 12. I will take them for accuracy and matters arising simultaneously. So page one. Barbara?
Yes, I did submit apologies for this meeting but they're not noted.
Thank you, Peter, can you note that? Thank you. Page two? No. Page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Thank you. Very good set of minutes there Peter, thank you. And there are attached the public questions and their responses. So without further ado, can we call upon the cabinet member councillor Logan to give his update please?
Yeah, thank you. So everyone should have received written reports and apologised that it came late separate to the agenda, I was really unwell last week and set aside time on Tuesday to write a report and ended up being actually knocked out by some sort of bug of some description. There wasn't Covid, the test says. So there was just three things basically I wanted to mention, they're all mentioned in the report but it's just a little bit of an update. The first is to do with secondary school admissions appeals process. So I've had a meeting today with Wirral Council which seems strange but I'll explain. So our, part of our appeals process is a panel interview of pupils. Now, we've spoke before about secondary school admissions problems and how that they vary all across the city, have a difference to different localities. There's a particular issue in the LA Del 15 area with Muslim families, or the perception at least is that Muslim families are more likely not to get one of their first five preferences for secondary schools. Whether that perception is correct or not, either way, what we do find is, as a war councillor I've found this and then continuing as a cabinet member, we get lots of families, children from Muslim families and from black or ethnic minority families who don't get any of their preferences and therefore have to appeal or choose to appeal the decision, the placement that they were given. Now, the feedback of the appeals process is that it can be quite hostile, it's not accessible, this is the feedback I've always had as a war councillor, that it can be hostile and in some cases even traumatic actually. So obviously I wanted to look at that and wanted to try and do something about that. So one of the aspects that affect this hostility or perception hostility is the panel itself and what we've got reports of is families of the panel not being, from families of the panel not being representative of the local neighbourhood, often being three white people when the person appealing is black or Muslim. And also actual incidences of having the same panel, exactly the same three people appearing at the appeals panel for different schools, which might not seem on the face of it like a problem, but if you're a family and you turn up to a school and you're levying out on the line and say, these are all the reasons why this school is perfect for my child, and then the next day you go to a different school and try and make the same arguments and it's the same three people inhering those arguments, that's really disarming and undermining to the family. And then there's other issues that probably more straightforward to do with language barriers and stuff that we are discussing now. So the first question is where do the panels come from? And actually we don't offer that as a service as a council, but Wirral Council does and then there's a few other places where those panels come from. I've met today with Wirral Council and they're all on board for trying to find a bigger range of people to sit on the appeals. Because it's Wirral Council, they recruit from Wirral Council, but actually some of their schools, they actually pull together the panels for St Hilda's and St Margaret's, which are obviously nowhere near the Wirral. So what I'm going to look into is getting people to step forward to potentially be on the panel for the appeals process. It is a big ask because for a school like St Hilda's, last week what that meant was two whole weeks of every day sitting on the appeals process because it has to be the same three people for every appeal. So it's a really big ask for someone's time and it's not paid, you get refurbishments and food, but it's a lot of work basically. But we're having those conversations and meeting with another organisation next weekend, still need to speak to the archdiocese that apparently do pull together some panels for some schools. But as I said, asking those questions and trying to address that problem is really important to me and it was a really good conversation with the Wirral and they were really keen to get more feedback about how the appeals that they do have gone. The other aspect is trying to support families through the appeals process itself, not just the panel. And I'm still in conversation with Rachel Stalker from the Liverpool John Moores University Law Clinic. What she is hoping to do is kind of a workshop type thing where parents can bring their appealed documents and someone from the law clinic, a student can go through with them and help them in preparing for the panel interview. She hasn't got to the stage yet whether their legal department will allow them to do that because the appeals process is not a legal process. So whether a legal law clinic should be informing on it is something that they need to figure out, but we're hoping that what we will be able to do is information sessions like we did last year and we're already working towards arranging them. So that's the appeals process, that's what's going on there so far. One of the other things I wanted to mention is, we spoke about this before but it's just a bit of an update. So we're trying to look into how we can use the planning process or the council's planning process to deliver on employment criteria. So Preston Council have started doing this a few, started to try and do this a few years ago and we met with representatives from Preston Council last week on the Monday. And what they've got is an employment and skills statement as part of the planning process. So for every planning application above a certain size, so the major planning developments above so many houses or above so many square foot if it's not residential, you have to provide an employment and skills statement, okay? And they get support, they have to pay, the developer has to pay for the support to do that. What you then get then is, and Preston Council have had that since 2017, what they've seen is developers will put forward an employment and skills statement but then not necessarily meet that commitment over the lifetime of the project. So what they're looking at now is how we can use the planning process to make that more stringent or more enforceable, possibly even enforceable, as a planning condition, although planning conditions can be appealed, or possibly as a section 106 agreement that, for example, we will build this development but so much of our workforce will be, X percentage of our workforce will be sourced from the local community. And if that's done through the planning process, then developers could be held to account. Now, the officers from Preston Council were very open and said, we are pushing at the realms of what we think is legally possible through the planning process, but that's kind of where we want to be because we want to push developers as far as we can in terms of delivering for local communities. We're having conversations, those conversations with officers from Preston are ongoing and we're trying to work out how we can make this work for Liverpool. And I think some recent planning decisions, in my opinion, may get even more relevant that we tighten things up in terms of developers delivering for local communities. And that was that, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we spoke last time about Tracy who is here reporting back on the Race Quality Task Force. But actually, those reports need to go through Cabinet before the discussion Select Committee and that hasn't happened yet, so that will happen in the future and we're just working out a timeline for when that's going to be. And I'm happy for questions, anything I've just said or anything from the report or anything else?
Thanks Tom. Questions? Angela?
Thanks Tom for the report, that's really, really good, I mean councillor Logan for the report, that's really good, thank you. My question is, it's not on anything that you've mentioned so far, it's about the EC H P plans. We've been having reports that they're coming through on time now, they're actually took time but the quality isn't particularly there and it's leading to a lot of distress from parents, like they're not being given sufficient time to name the school and so on. So it's more about, it's great that we're hitting the targets but it's about obviously the process for the parents and it's becoming quite difficult because they're still in the same, we're getting a completed plan but it's quite wrong and there's a lot of things that are going to need amending in it and that is causing issues for parents.
And I guess, do I look with responding, myself responding to emails is that people are far more, people are far greater value in a, like a good response and a quick response if that makes sense and I think the same thing kind of exists, but actually it's our strategy, as you see, to do both, isn't it? They have to be in time and they have to be good and robust. I would guess that we've been quite a bit of talking about the H C Ps throughout the night, I don't know if you want to kind of refer this bit of the question until discussing the report later on, is that right?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine, yeah.
So, lift pack have come specifically for us to talk to them about the parent experience. Is that okay if we defer it till then? Kimberly, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a few really short questions. Just when it mentions about the review of governors and diversifying governors' boards, I was just wondering about how they'll be paired with schools in the future and what opportunities will the schools have to feed into that selection appointment process? There's little mention about the Thousand Voice Choir, I was just wondering if the schools have been contacted in Liverpool about the opportunity and is it primary and secondary schools that are both eligible for it? And it's not in the report but we mentioned it a little bit at the last meeting about CO2 monitors for schools, I was just wondering if there's been any progress installed on more schools in Liverpool, any updates?
I can't properly hear what you're saying there, sorry Kimberly, but I think with the governors and appointing governors, that would always be in conjunction with the schools. So I think what we're at now is we're at the point about to write out to community groups asking people to step forward who could be governors and then the officer who's responsible for governors in school in Liverpool actually will work with that person to find them a school if that makes sense, because the last thing we would want is to start appointing governors at council in schools, right now we don't want them. It'd just be terrible. So yeah, it would just be an ongoing discussion about finding, matching the right people to the right schools. The Thousand Voice Choir, I don't think they've written to anyone yet, the last update, they were still looking for funding to put the deposit down on the venue. It will be secondary and primary. What is really interesting I think and I've tried to link Jill, the woman from the Thousand Voice Choir, up with Karen Lawler who runs our virtual school for Look After Children because there is alongside the choir is volunteering opportunities for like 60 to 70 young people and it's not just volunteering, it's training and it's safeguarding training, community service, not community, customer service training, all that type of stuff. But no, they're not at the stage of going out to schools yet, so I mean, I've got schools saying, we haven't heard of this yet or whatever, but they're not at that stage yet. We're meeting with officers from Culture, I can't remember when, but we're trying to probably put together with Jill from Thousand Voice Choir with officers from Culture to see what support Culture can give as well. Because there is already stuff that happens with choirs across the city that I'm not really that aware of, it's been brought to my attention recently, but we're just trying to link all of that up. With the CO2 monitors, I'm trying to remember who requested this report but I was copied into a response with stuff to do with CO2 monitors. There's still, as far as I know, okay, you've got, okay, I'll hand over to Jonathan.
Okay, so we've got 23% of Liverpool schools, we've got CO2 monitors in our classrooms, 100% of special schools in at least 50% of classes, 90% of secondary schools and only 7% of primary. The D F E have just begun to release the monitors for primary schools at this moment, so we stand at 23% have got monitors.
Thanks Jonathan. Any other questions for Tom? I have a couple of my own comments. I was interested in what you were saying about Wirral Council, Tom, and it just occurred to me while you were talking, would there be a possibility for maybe a pool of panelists across the local city region and maybe pull people in to different local authorities rather than where they are? And if there was something whereby they're not allowed to have a rote whether they're one, two or three days on the run in the way you've described, because I do think that would be very upsetting for families, but I think it's something that could be managed. That was one about that. The other one I pick up on was what you were saying about local employment and going through the planning process. I would prefer really, and I think it has been done successfully elsewhere, for that process to be pinned down contractually with financial penalties if they fail to deliver. Whether that comes through as 106 money, I don't know, but I think you can set within contract if it's properly written, percentage demands for local employment and if they cannot, because sometimes it does happen, they can't get the kind of workers they want, penalties will kick in. I think over the whole thing, planning is a very difficult process to mess with really. It's strict, it's very strict legally and I don't know how it would look for us to be pulling planning into those kinds of contracts, it's just a thought. And I welcome what you say about the Race Quality Task Force, could we make sure it's done sooner rather than later because we really would like to hear that report. And can I thank you for your report and ask members if this update is to be noted, thank you. Billy?
Can I just come in on that point about employment? From experience, I know that when some of the really big projects are awarded, it's part of the provisos on some occasions that the contractors involved have to employ local apprentices. When the work was being done on the new Royal Hospital, that was one of the provisos, the apprentices were meant to be taken on from the Kensington area and it's not uncommon for major contractors to have to encounter a proviso like that and deal with it. So I think that, I know what Tom's saying about the link to planning, but there might be a more direct route, you know, at the tender stage when people are tendering for major contracts in the city, the proviso should be there that they take on apprentices and local labour.
Thanks Billy, you're absolutely correct and that's my experience. I would say actually in tonight's papers, there is a mention of similar on the Denford House building project in Mywood and that's been quite successful. Did you want to come back Tom?
Yeah, can I just respond to that point? I completely agree, especially when you talk about offering out contracts from the council, that is very, very direct, but through planning, we can have an influence on any development, even if it's on land that's not council-owned land, if that makes sense. And I think that could be a massive win. Yeah, I could talk about that all night but no, I completely agree.
Thanks for that addition Tom, I think that is interesting. Nick, you had your hand?
No, I welcome that, that we're looking at that and strengthening what we do through planning. I think there's been loads of really good work going on over, you know, a 10-year and more period through Liverpool in work in terms of looking at what we do as a council when it's, you know, it's council procurement, it's a council scheme. We did that on the Liverpool School Investments Scheme with a huge amount of success. We also did it working with the Royal, because obviously it was the Trust Board that did that, not the City Council, but in terms of, you know, in terms of helping them to do that, I think Liverpool in work do a really good role on that. What I think we do need to look at more, and again, I welcome what you've said tonight Tom, is where you've got planning applications, we had a planning application yesterday on the waterfront around section 106 and there's been lots of issues on that. But I think notwithstanding that, we should be looking at, you know, how we quantify the social value of some of that work that those, that those planning applicants could be doing around local jobs, around skills, around apprenticeships. And I think there's lots more that we could do on that to quantify that. So when we're talking about section 106, I think we have to go further than just about it being a financial contribution. When developers are coming and saying they can't make a section 106 contribution around viability and affordability and things, we should be looking at what they're doing and quantifying what they're doing and pushing them on what they're doing around jobs and skills and apprenticeships. I think there's a lot, a lot more we could be doing on that and I welcome that. I think the challenge is going to be how we make sure the planning responds to this agenda, because I think everyone sees that this is a good agenda and I think there's, you know, support from everybody about that, but it's how you actively implement that and make that happen with planning rather than this side of the council.
Thanks Nick.
Can I just go quickly? One thing that came from the meeting with Preston actually is, is I said, well actually, so if you do have this as a planning condition or as part of section 106, what happens if they just ignore it? And he said, well, we would look at enforcing, but actually the idea is not, the idea is it doesn't come to that. And when they've run their pilot scheme over a year, the developers they worked with really, really welcomed it because actually it's not just in isolation, you have to do this, but also, and what they're doing in Preston as an external organisation actually, the developer has to fund to work with them, to find local apprentices. So actually through the planning process, the developer is being encouraged to find their apprentices and find them locally and actually the developers all welcome that because they struggle to find people to fill positions currently. So I don't necessarily think it will be seen as something being done for developers, it's about working with them to meet them to conditions or however we put it in place.
I actually think lots of very big organisations do those things and it is, it's positive. It should just be seen as good practice and something that people should try and aim for. Obviously there are smaller employers who might find that difficult to manage and pay for, but if we can work with contractors who are doing that in the first instance, we are sending out a very strong message, aren't we, to others? Any other questions for Tom? Can we thank Tom for the report and note it please? Thank you. Director of Education, update report, Jonathan, on pages 18 to 24 please.
Thank you very much Chair. Just to point out that on page 18, the Covid cases, it should be for academic year up until the 25th of October, so apologies for that. So you can see that it's 3,563 up until the 25th of October. The figures from last week have come in and we are now at 3,752. So in the first week back, we had 135 positive cases amongst pupils, 47 from the primary sector, 82 from the secondary, five, sorry, one from special school sector and five from other settings and 20 staff tested positive in that first week back after half term. The current threshold, thresholds for public health to introduce additional or contingency framework measures is currently in three schools that we've had to introduce since returning to school since September. The year groups that are still being hardly hit are year 10 predominantly and year 6. It seems to be the two year groups that are still kept up with high numbers. So they're the numbers that have come in since the start of September, as I say, on page 18 through to half term, and then the numbers I've given verbally are the updates for the first week of November since returning back. Obviously across the city is that whilst the levels, I think Steve, it was around 268, I think wasn't it, was the rate, is that it's still high in the age 13 to 17 year group, that's where we're still seeing the higher rates. In terms of vaccinations... In terms of vaccinations that are actually taking place from 12 to 15 year olds is the positive consent forms are currently standing at 28.6% of 12 to 15 year olds. And the percentage of children vaccinated against the full cohort is 12.4% of 12 to 15 year olds in the city. That's similar to core cities, but it is significantly lower than national averages for that age group. On page 21 there, there is a little bit of information around anti vaccination campaigns. Prior to half term, we did have quite a lot of activity with 12 schools being visited. And while some of the anti vaccination protests were quite peaceful, we did have a number that were quite intimidating and one of them actually went to the press as well. And that we were working with, with various teams and with the head teachers on to address how we, how we move forward on that one. And as I say, 12 sites have actually reported anti vaccine entering the school sites there. If we move on to lower down on page 22 there around the sense efficiency consultation, that's just giving the headlines. We're currently working through the process of the sense efficiency responses. And we hope to have something published certainly this side of Christmas about what the outcome of that consultation is. On page 23, there's a, an overview there of how attendance figures look across the city. And it's broadly very similar to national averages. Obviously, national averages are lower at this time. It's broken down by attendance for all pupils against national, for those children with an EHC plan, children with a social worker and free school meal attendance. And as you can see right across on page 23 there is that the figures for Liverpool are broadly similar to national. Permanent exclusion figures there on page 23 is that we saw 14 permanent exclusions since the first of September. And that number is too high, you know, but putting it frankly, there's a breakdown there. As you can see of the 14 permanent exclusions, nine of the permanent exclusions were actually from academies. So you can see the figure there, it says five from maintained VA schools. The next figure there should say the number of permanent exclusions from academies. So nine of the 14 from academy settings, broken down by gender, by SEN support and also by BME there. So we can see the breakdown. And then similarly by year group. You can see that year nine have got the highest number of permanent exclusions. That's on page 24. And the reasons for permanent exclusions there, the use of carrying a weapon vandalism. We're now reporting a following on from some of the initial findings and recommendations from the race quality that were reporting by racism have had a number of permanent exclusions for racism, persistent defiance, drug alcohol, verbal threats and assaults toward adults and assaults on another pupil are the main reasons cited for the permanent exclusions. And then the last point there is around Ofsted inspections. At the time of writing, there were 11. Since the first of September, there have actually been 15 Ofsted inspections. So they're pretty active across the city at the moment. There's usually a lag of about three to four weeks until the outcome of inspections becomes public. There's three inspection outcomes there that have, you know, have been made public there with St Paul's Juniors remaining a good school, St Hilda's remaining a good school, Cardinal Heenan improved from requires improvement to good. And additionally, Blackmore Juniors remains a good school and Smithdown Primary was upgraded to outstanding, which is a significant achievement, bearing in mind that the Chief Inspector has just announced that she envisages the number of outstanding schools halving nationally. So that is a significant, you know, achievement from, from the staff at Smithdown there. Obviously, as, as the inspection outcomes become public, we'll be sharing that at each select. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Could we minute our congratulations towards schools, please, Peter? That's a great set of results, especially for Smithdown, as you say. Outstanding. And right, questions for Jonathan on this report, anyone? Lila?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask about the permanent exclusions. Can you, do you know what provision those pupils went on to, if, if at all, if you can give me that, please?
Went on to New Heights, which is the local authority pupil referral unit. So they all went to New Heights.
Any other questions? Just got a couple, if you don't mind, Jonathan. On page 20, where we've got the number of positive cases, which is 3152. Could you give that as an approximate percentage of the pupil population?
I know we've got about 75,000 pupils, so I'm not.
Okay, leave it, I'll work it out.
I haven't got my calculator.
My calculator later, later.
We've got 75,000 pupils. On page 20, is it?
3,152, I think it's 70 to 75,000. And then just to move on, just on the 12 cases entering school sites. This is really concerning. Have the police been involved in any of those?
Yeah. In a number of occasions, the schools did actually have to call the police. In a number of, in a number of situations is that it was quite peaceful. But some head teachers did have reasons to have to call the police because of particular aggression.
That's really shocking and it's a sad thing to hear. On page 23 though, I'm looking at what is probably a bad situation, but thinking it's got silver lining. For the first time in a very long time, our attendance figures are comparing quite well with nationally. And that's only because the national figures are down. But we're comparing well and so therefore that's a place to start, isn't it? What we have to do is make sure when those national figures go up, so do ours. I, I did think COVID and the pandemic would have impacted more greatly on us. And I think it probably has. But somehow we seem to have managed to come through and plateau. So I think that's good news in some ways. Tom, have you done the sum? How, how much? About 4%. So we'll say it's under 5%. So really, in real terms, that's quite low, isn't it? In terms of infection, I would have thought. So thanks for that report, Jonathan. And can we keep with you for the report on page 25, item seven, please? Thank you. Sorry about that. Can we notice everybody? The important business of being in a collective. Thanks.
It's the, the standing agenda item of the written statement of action. Just the, the headlines from this is, you know, I think the, the thing that we will continue to repeat is that there is still a, a very long way to go. And just picking up on, on councillor's point there in terms of the timeliness of EHCPs. Absolutely, we still need to make sure that quality is consistent. We are seeing an improved quality in the educational aspects of the planet. Still not, you know, perfect. There's still not a consistent good quality. But there is an improvement there, but there's still some way to go in improving the quality of, of, of health provision and outcomes and also for social care. And so that's in terms of the headline bit, but I'm, I'm sure that colleagues from Livpac will be able to, you know, to speak further about that. But yes, absolutely. In terms of, we need to make sure that timeliness and quality go hand in hand. I'm sure that, you know, members of Select will be, will be aware of the, you know, significant challenge that we've got in actually getting there. And as I say, there is, there is still a long way to go. What we're seeing however, is that we're seeing the numbers continually to, you know, increase significantly. So on average, we're getting about 80 requests to assess every single month. Where that puts pressures is that, for example, a, a key aspect of the EHC process is educational psychologist reports. We've got 12 educational psychologists. They're currently delivering educational advice or psychology advices on time in 100% of cases. However, with that demand and only 12 educational psychologists, that's a significant pressure. It's worth just noting that a lot of other local authorities are nowhere near that. And a lot of other local authorities don't actually have a permanent educational psychology team, which we have. The going rate at the moment, which other local authorities is they are paying educational psychologists over a thousand pound a day. So you can see how, how straight away that, that causes, you know, massive pressure. We've got 17 caseworkers in the system. So if we've got almost 4,000 plans, we've got, you know, 17 caseworkers having to, to manage round about 238 EHC plans per person. Where that becomes challenging is that we've got a massive hill to climb with annual reviews. Annual reviews obviously has statutory function. But when each caseworker's got 238 plans to make, you know, to, to conduct annual reviews on and has 80 plans coming in, you can see where we've got real tensions and pushes in the system. We're not unique in Liverpool though. That's the case, you know, everywhere. And we just need to make sure that we've got our systems and processes in place to make sure that we are legally compliant and working within timeframes and delivering, you know, quality plans at the end of it. With regards to the, the pressures on parents is that parents have a minimum of 15 days. And I think where, for example, we've got particular pressures or where parents will feel the pressures is because our timeframes are still very, very close to the wire. Is that we're not giving parents more than those 15 days and that's the point that we need to get to. So we need to shunt everything further up within the assessment process so that we can actually get plans out to parents earlier and giving them much more than those minimum of 15 days in, in, in which to respond, you know, to, to the plans. And similarly within that is that all the plans now in terms of assessment should be having a co-production meeting whereby parents are actually involved right at the beginning, round about week six or seven to actually shape those plans. Whilst that is our process moving forward from April, it's fair to say that that hasn't consistently been the case. And we're having to deal with, for example, various challenges around staff going into schools and working within a various number of different schools in order to get those, those plans done. Because the reality is, is that whilst we can get through a lot more plans over, you know, virtually, it's not the same as actually being physically in the school, working with parents and working at the schools to co-produce a plan in the most effective way. So we're still making progress, you know, that's what I suppose is how I would summarise it, but there's still a very long way to go. We do have challenges that we need to address with regards to joint commissioning of therapies and access to therapies. That's one of the big learnings that, you know, is still coming out, you know, frequently. And similarly, you know, we are still continuing to see more parents having recourse to tribunals whilst we're resolving more before it actually gets to, you know, tribunal conclusions actually being made. Is that we're still seeing a significant increase in that. Part of that is because of having cleared the backlog, but that's not going to be perpetually, you know, the backlog's now cleared. So once we actually get through that, we should hopefully start to see that the tribunal figures are reducing. However, they are, they have increased since last time we, we reported. I'm just conscious, obviously, you know, you've got all the report there in terms of, you know, a, a full response. But I think, I don't, apologies Chair, I don't want to preempt, but I think members of Select really wanted to hear from parents rather than, rather than the formal report on me. And but all, all the facts are actually in there. So I don't know, Chair, whether now is an appropriate time for you to invite Livpac.
Yes, thanks, Jonathan. Comprehensive report as always. I do think it's difficult because I've just done the sums here. So since 2019 to date, there's been an increase of just over 1,200 plans needed each year. So it's almost like chasing something that is continually moving away from you. And of course, we're also under pressure to improve the quality of those, the co-production and the the coming together, I guess, of the health and the educational elements as well as the social care. So we appreciate it's difficult, but this came up last time. And this is a standard item, Donna and Maria, on this agenda. So we are monitoring it very closely. But we thought it would be nice to hear how parents are feeling about all of this. And I do know, and I would call upon you to, because I do know and I know Tom will know, I know what you do and I know what Livpac does, but if you could just preface what you have to say for members so they have a sense of the work you do, the fact you're volunteers, who you work with. And then maybe something around this process, because I know you've been heavily involved in this as well, which is a big piece of work. And it is like trying to turn around a huge liner without any controls, really. It's difficult. And I know you appreciate that, but ultimately the aim is for the children and their families to get a far better service from this. So if you could start with just a little bit of background about Livpac, please. Thank you.
Thanks ever so much. We have done a PAC for everyone as well that gives a, you know, a brief breakdown of what we do. So we are the recognised parent carer forum in, in the city, which means that we are only funded partly by the Department of Education. They are the only people that we actually have to answer to. And within that is to work with parents, carers, children, young people, but also to work with the services to improve those services for our, our children and their families. So we do work with health, social care, education, third sector organisations. As the Chair has said, that we are a voluntary service. So, so we do it because we have a passion with parents ourselves. And, and we're here, you know, we want to improve this service. So it is very much about working together, but also being that critical friend, but also to challenge. And that's what myself and Maria do at quite strategic meetings. But as I say, we do have a PAC for, for all of yous to have a look at. And I think for us as the forum, we hear lots of parents and carers, some positive, some negative. And I think for us, the one thing that sticks out is the lack of consistency across the city within our schools. And it's very disjointed for our families and it's a bit upsetting, I think, for them. They're not being listened to or, you know, the, the roles of the eyes for some of our parents when they, when they go into school because it's that lack of understanding for them. So they feel, you know, as we see with the EHCP, how it's grown. It's because parents have got a lack of confidence in our mainstream schools. And also because there's more emerging needs that are coming through for our children and young people. And there are those difficulties through post-COVID which, you know, doesn't help some of our children and young people. What we have seen through, since we've had the written statement of action, is there has been significant improvements. And that is around that we have more yeses to assessments for EHCPs. And if there is a no, then there is a pathway that that they go down and they go to SENIS and they work with parents and carers. The co-production meetings, we've heard absolute positive feedbacks from those because parents are feel involved. And actually they can sometimes resolve things very quickly and easily. The backlog, which was, was massive, that's been cleared and that's a credit to the EHCP team. I'm very much so of how hard they've worked. Myself and Maria sit on the EHC Quality Assurance and sometimes we have had difficulties. They haven't been the best, but we are seeing slight improvements each month that we have those meetings. There is a still long, a still a long way to go with improving that. But it, it comes across not just through our, our education EPs. It's through health and social care as well. And it's very much about bringing them on board and, and making sure that they're given the right information. And I will pass to Maria now.
Thank you. I think the, when, when we're looking as parents and carers across the city, I think that the areas, key areas that we found for improvement that parents talked us about from their experience is communication. And I think as a parent or a carer of a young person who's got a learning need or a difficulty, you only ever want to tell your story once and you don't want to repeat that again and again and again. And with processes and systems that are in place, they may not always be in as tight and systems may not spoken to each other, let alone colleagues across the multidisciplinaries and across those multi-agencies. So communication is key. And whilst that is improving, as Jonathan alludes to and Donna, in relation to those co-production meetings, there's still a long way to go. Communication is always key for everything in every part of life and particularly when you're looking at a young person with an, an emerging need. I think that also when we spoke about tribunals and challenges, so if you've got that good communication, what you're hoping to do then is, is obviously reduce those challenges that come across or those concerns or those complaints that are coming in. So I think that probably would feed into that, but we know that there's still quite a number of tribunals. And often parents find that quite challenging when they go to those and having to, Tom had spoken about it before, you know, you have to put your heart on your sleeve when you're looking at appeals processes for schools. It's the same sort of a picture for, for tribunals. I think the other key area is, and you've spoken about it as well, is post-16 provision and employability. And we're doing a massive piece of work on that, looking at preparing. And we're doing a massive piece of work on that, looking at preparing for adulthood for our young people. Because I often say mind the gap and that's very much how it feels for parents out there. Jonathan also spoke about annual reviews and whilst it's, you know, it's a credit, as Donna said, the fact that we've now got our E H C. P backlog, you know, down to zero, annual reviews are still a huge issue and parents are finding that frustrating. But obviously they've had a review and their documentation isn't up to date, and particularly for those moving into alternative settings or that post sixteen. Also for us, I think that there's always a concern for our young people who've got an educational healthcare plan. But what we need to be mindful of is there are lots and lots and lots of young people who are on SEND support. And their needs must be met and must be addressed, you know, particularly in that moving forward with preparing for adulthood.
Maria, thanks Donna, can I take questions from members, please? Lila?
I just, oh, sorry. Obviously, I totally agree about communication and, you know, the lack of it. Is the most frustrating thing. I just wanted to ask a question about what do you feel would be the kind of tools that it would be best for you? Or for us to use, you know, as a council, to to parents and and young people. As a communication tool, what what's the gap there that can be filled and how can be? I'm not asking you to answer it, you know, it's not like, you know, three strikes and you're out, but maybe it's something that you need to discuss is the. The types of communication that'd be more helpful to parents and carers. And young children from the council and, you know, and from yourselves, so. A bit like that co-production team meetings, but, you know, obviously different types of communication because. In the world of electronics now, we communicate in totally different ways, don't we, so, you know, maybe there's something there. That you could think about.
I think I was going to touch on that, the fact is that you're right, we're living in a very different world, and particularly for those young people. I think we can even talk about primary school children and how they communicate now, and a lot of it is through virtual. And social media and looking at that, and I think some of our young people found that during lockdown. That they actually enjoyed the fact that they didn't need to be going into school and they could use that platform to engage. And it is something that we probably need to look at, and we found from a parent care point of view, are the numbers of parents that were engaging. You know, I couldn't say quadrupled really, but it just made it more accessible, so I think you're right, it is something to look at.
Thank you, Angela, I should have asked you if you could repeat your question, please, that you put to Tom. Thank you.
I feel like you you more or less answered it, to be honest with you, it was about communication. The the issue that we've, that I've noticed that's been brought to my attention. Is that people are getting their E H C plans on time, but. They were a bit missing and that they they felt as if whoever it was who's doing it was saying, well, let's just get it in on time and then we'll amend it and. There's quite significant things that were done missing, you know, like. Being able to name the school and so on like that, that would all get missed and that was causing significant distress to. To to the parents that I dealt with, but I think I might be sending a few parents your way. It seems like a fantastic resource and I think it's an amazing thing that you do and I thank you for it.
Did I hear you say you have some packs to give out as well, brilliant, any more questions for the pack? Okay, can. Oh, Tom, sorry, do you know I keep doing this with my back and looking my way, come on.
No, I just wanted to. To add about, so. The message of that we're going in the right direction, but there's a long way to go, I think is is exactly correct. And and within that, we've had some massive successes. What what we keep, and I spoke to Jonathan about this loads, what we keep coming back to is actually. To our parents, to to, not necessarily to Donna, you're much more engaged and involved than. The everyday parent who's who's working, who's who is maybe just got their child in mind. There's a lot of statistics, these statistics just don't matter, what matters is that the experience of that one child, if that makes sense. And saying where we're going to be in five years' time is in some ways irrelevant as well. Because what's happening now is what's important for that parent and that child, so. Whilst we think there's been some brilliant successes, we are just being very careful with that messaging. Because we know there's still parents who are going through absolute nightmares, basically.
I couldn't agree more, Tom, I think the way I would describe it is you've got two parallels or two things in parallel. One is the work to try and get to where we need to be, which is a lot of work of writing and getting the right quality. But you have to work with what's right in front of you all the time. And on the point of communication, I would say. As I am often saying. You need to just talk more and it is about telling people what you're doing, sometimes you have to say to them stuff. They might not necessarily want to hear, it could be we're delayed, it could be we haven't got a report. But keeping them in the process as part of the process is respectful. And it has actually also proven good customer service. You know, you've got to tell people and be honest about where you are, it's no good if they're chasing. Officers to know what's happening. Tell them what's happening, keep them informed, that is the key, in my opinion. And any other questions? Steve?
Thanks, Bob, just briefly, and totally support, obviously, Tom's point is parents who are holding us to account for the improvements. The committee holds us to account as well, this is important. But also, just a reminder, we're expecting the inspector at BAC as well. And the Care Quality Commission at Ofsted, and just to remind us sort of what can happen when that doesn't go well. Colleagues in Birmingham have just had commissioners appointed to run their SEND service in that council. And so, you know, we're under no illusion, we've got a lot of work to do, but there is progress, thanks.
Thanks for that, Steve, do we know, are we looking at this year, next year? For the return?
I I'm anticipating before Christmas, but it could be after Christmas, but it will definitely be. Every week we're waiting for it. Christmas, Christmas twenty twenty one.
You have all your factual stuff here, you know, everything's in the report, we can, we can read the report. We have shown some progress, but now it's got to be a case of rapid or quicker. Or faster, but I do believe. The increase in the numbers needs further analysis as well, I was interested in what ladies were saying. About disaffection with other sectors is part of the increase, I would have thought that was impossible. Because I would have thought you either have a need or you don't. But there we go, so I think some analysis around that would be welcome as well, please Jonathan. Any further questions on this, it is a standard item and we are monitoring it closely. Donna, would you like to come back, please?
I'd just like to say, as a parent and carer who's going through this process. We only want people to be open, honest and transparent, I think as a parent, if you are told. It's very much like telling a child they can't have something and giving them the reason why. Or or being, you know, saying, actually, you can't have it now, but we can look at that in the future, it's very much about that. But if parents aren't being given that information, then they're only drawing on that bad experience. And one of the biggest things that we do say to parents is make sure that you have a good relationship with your SENCOs. Make sure you build up that, because they're the people that you you're going to go to within within the schools. But with our casework offices, it's building up that, you know, relationship with them so that you can pick up that phone and go, actually, I don't get this bit, can you explain that? And having that two-way conversation, and I think for us, it is about being, you know, with any service, it is being about open, transparent and honest.
Thank you for that, I think it's absolutely crucial, because I have noticed when I get emails, it usually isn't about a parent. Feeling nobody's listening to them and they're having to do the chasing, so, yeah. And I think, you know, that's just a change of attitude, really. And thank you so much for coming this evening, so it was a delight to see you. And keep us posted on the progress and I'm sure you're really looking forward to the return inspection as well. Oh dear. Anyway, thanks to everybody, can we note the report, please? Thank you, and we will move on now to, I think it's. Item eight. And which is the Adult Learning Services update on pages thirty seven to forty two, and Jonathan. I think we're going to have to say something here, aren't we, Steve? Congratulations to Mr Jones, because he is now. The Director for Education and Skills and therefore this report is in his name. And he's going to speak to it, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you Chair, it was, the reporting officer for this one was Elaine McCausland, so if there are any questions, I'll have to get them to the Select Committee. Via writing, but just to to point out some things, headlines really, from the Adult Learning Service. This too is an area of council provision that we're just awaiting inspection for, and inspection could happen at any time. Just to go back to the schools and the S E N, as I said, you can see that Ofsted are particularly active. In in this area at the moment, so adult learning could be inspected at any point. With regards to our twenty twenty one learner participation rates, is that we're very close to getting back to pre-pandemic figures. We had one thousand three hundred learners enrolled in the academic year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And this academic year, we've recruited one thousand two hundred and fourteen learners onto the course. So that is very similar to pre-pandemic levels, levels rather, it was eight hundred and eighty this time last year. So that's what our learner participation rate is. And obviously, we're looking to deliver fifty five percent of learning to residents of the ten wards of the city, but the highest levels of unemployment, that's our target for this year. And thirty percent to learners from minority ethnic groups, the twenty percent to learners with disabilities. We've also had the Granby Centre Vision and Ambition, which is due to, I think, the opening, formal opening of it is is next week. And we've secured the strategic investment funds to refurbish the centre, which has allowed us to enhance and extend existing opportunities. More classrooms and a learning space, space, the construction of six additional classrooms and a multimedia suite and a teaching. And kitchen. So we've been able to create additional teaching and learning opportunities for new learners. The centre will engage three hundred and seventy two additional learners. And progress thirty three percent into further learning and training and twenty five percent into further employment. And then the other thing, just to draw your attention to really, are the key issues and developments for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Recruitment of teaching staff remains a significant challenge for us in regards to boosting capacity and capability around the service targets. Obviously, as mentioned at the beginning, they're preparing for external inspection. And one of the key developments as well is to maximise the use of the Granby Centre post refurbishment. So if there are any specific questions on Elaine's report there, I'm happy to take any questions, Chair.
And Jonathan, any questions? Lila?
Oh, you're the new director, do you know how many? Actual adult learning centres we have, I mean, this one's just concentrating really on Granby and I understand the reason why. But and I know about Newsham, but I'm not really sure about. Any others. Like the north of the city, I'm sure we've got them, but.
I appeal to only having four days in the job. Apologies, but I will, I'll get that back in writing, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about Seligreen, but I'm not really sure whether it is or not. I think it used to be, and the other thing is, is it possible for like. For for me to go and visit Granby because it's about twenty years.
Absolutely, I think there's a standing invite to members of Select Committee for the opening and at any point as well, but I'll make sure that that gets circulated, Chair, if that's okay.
Cheers Jonathan, thank you, thank you Chair.
I think the visit is really. It's it's a good thing because I think staff welcome us visiting. Plus, I think talking to the learners is similar as talking to Livpac tonight, you're getting. The direct experience of service users, so it is worth doing. I have just a couple. I noticed there's six new classes at Granby and then I'm looking here on page forty where it says maximising the use of the Granby Centre post refurbishment. I just wondered, and you might not know the answer to this, Jonathan. What exactly that might, action plan might look like, what sort of things might they be doing? To bring in the extra numbers, or is it a case of there was a need for more space to put on more courses? I know the E A L courses were in great demand, do you have an answer or do you need to send us something out? No? It was because the space was actually needed, we were over capacity, okay, and then just finally, just one other question. Well, one comment, I noticed here on page forty one, most learns do not pay for their courses. Therefore, we have to very clearly evidence the numbers. And I think this is why these reports are always full of percentages, numbers and outcomes. But can I ask that going forward, we have site of the survey results, that's mentioned at the bottom of page forty one. Because they undertake regular post-course satisfaction surveys and I'd just like to have. Not a lot of words, just a quick look at some of those outcomes if possible, thank you, anybody else? Can we thank you and Elaine for that report, please Jonathan, thank you. And item nine was a key decision to withdraw the call-in, the report is on pages forty three to fifty two. It was an urgent decision approved by the Chief Executive in consultation with the Mayor and Cabinet Members. To award a contract to HF Trust Limited as the supported employment provider. In line with part four, section five of the Constitution of the Council, special urgency. I took the decision that call-in should not apply as a call-in would seriously prejudice the council or the public interest. This is due to the current contract ending on the thirty first of October, which would have left a gap in provision. Along with no job coach support for twenty interns at Liverpool City Council and Liverpool University Foundation Hospital. And do any of the members have any questions about this, I think the report itself is self-evident. There wasn't anything contentious there, except for the fact it had become urgent because of timing. Do you all accept that that was okay? Thank you. Okay, item ten, scrutiny panels. At the last committee, the membership of the two appointed panels was finalised, since then. I've had a chair's briefing meeting with officers where the committee clerk raised a capacity issue due to the colleague retiring. And a number of statutory health services scrutiny committees currently being undertaken. However, I have now been assured that the two panels can be accommodated. Which will work on the model of task and finish scrutiny of no more than four meetings for each panel. Under this model, the first meeting is a scoping meeting where the panel receive an overview of the service concerned. And from that request, the information they need to undertake their in-depth scrutiny, which is received in meetings to and through. Meeting four reviews the information and the panel makes its recommendations, which are then received. For endorsement at the final Select Committee of the year. The aim is to have the inaugural meeting this side. Of the Christmas break and the other meetings early in the new year, enabling the panels to present final reports to the last meeting. Of the municipal year in March. Peter will write to the chairs, councillors, Henigan and Makinson. Both of whom have submitted apologies to arrange meeting dates with senior officers to agree the terms and references for panels. And I assume Peter's or all the volunteer panel members as well, yeah. Are there any questions, Lila, did you have any questions about this, because you were asking about this before the meeting?
Not not particularly, Chair, it's just, you know. It's very short space of time, isn't it, you know, now to scope something out and then get, you know, those. An in-depth scrutiny of any service that we make, so, but I'm sure we'll stick to it. Okay, thanks, thanks Chair.
I think it's good to have the structure there, and I think given what we all do now online. If either of the scrutiny panels need additional conversations, they can just do that online with Zoom, more teams and just keep it. As straightforward as possible for yourselves. Okay, item eleven is the Scheme of Delegation Report. Have, are there any questions about any of the items on? Are there any questions about any of the items on that report, please? I do have some questions myself, but I'll take all the members' questions first. Okay. Steve, page fifty-five. The academisation of Royal Green. Do we have a date or anywhere near a date when we're looking at that?
Yeah, first of December.
It is the first of December, okay. And over the page, same school. We're looking at over a million deficits. We're looking at costs of external solicitors fees, transfer of PFI, all of that, the council will pick up. And that is what has to happen. Do we have, will it be these figures or will it change at all?
They are the figures of academisation there, so the figures that are reported and what the council have to pick up.
And it says here that we do have, we have earmarked that in the revenue budget. Okay. But I just think, members, you need to be absolutely aware of the fact how much academisation is costing the city. It tends to be the case when a school gets an inadequate... Save the land reverse towards our government, does it? Yeah, but, I mean, we won't be here for that. The point is, it's very expensive for us and if you look at it, it can only happen when a school is judged inadequate. You know, if we invested that money prior to that Ofsted report, we could have maybe turned it around, who knows? But I just think it's often lost in the conversation that we are, and it always is the case, when a school is in a bad place, there will be financial problems, there always are. And that's what the council has to pick up for. So this is a bad loss for us in two ways. Jonathan, I can see you want to speak.
Yeah, I think it's just to make, thank you, Chair, just to make members of Select aware that there's a very, very clear direction of travel from government around the expectation for all schools to be affiliated towards a multi-academy trust moving forward, but with the very, very clear intention that all schools are academies by probably 2030. We wouldn't pick up, the local authority only picks up the costs for schools that are subject to a directive academy order, which as Chair has pointed out, that's when a school is judged to be inadequate. Even if a school has been inadequate and comes out of a category and comes out of special measures, the government at this moment in time now are not lifting those directive academy orders. So you could have been inadequate, judged good, they're not lifting it, so you'll still have to become an academy. So the local authority doesn't pick up the costs for schools that aren't a directive academy order, but I think Select do need to be aware that that is the, that is the direction that the departments are putting on. And I think it's fair to say that is also the pressure that they're putting directly on schools. So for example, if school needs any support, then governments are intervening and directing them straight to multi-academy trusts or to teaching schools. And there's a consultation currently out at the moment to remove local authorities' responsibilities towards standards and also to remove the funding for local authorities for school improvement. And there's a three-week window on that consultation, which ends about the middle of November. That's just for Select members to be aware. Thank you, Chair.
And Jonathan, I think they did say, didn't they, a few years ago, they wanted every school to be an academy and then they withdrew that because they realised they already had a mechanism in place to do it slowly anyway. I did circulate to some members an article I read the other week and it's very interesting when you dig and look at who are involved in some of the larger academies and what their agenda is. So I would refer members back to that article as well. I think it's interesting. Page fifty-eight, the decision to allocate a budget of £44,000 to St Anne's for adactions to expand Princess School. And I'm just interested for more information about this arrangement, really, because I know they are desperately in need of new premises and I just wondered if we could have more information about how this would work and how it would be staffed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this was towards the end of last year and particularly for children moving from early years settings into reception. Obviously, one of the things with significant demand around education healthcare plans and those children being assigned to special schools is that the demand for special school places is massively increasing. Those of you who know that Princess School is that its premises are in need of a lot of works and there are just far too many children for them to actually be housed or accommodated in Princesses. So, you know, we're very grateful to St Anne's Primary School that actually have allowed Princesses to use their premises, but obviously we had to carry out some modifications. Obviously, the pupils have been assigned to Princesses schools, so Princesses provide all the staffing, but they just deliver it on St Anne's Primary School site. Part of the SEND consultation has obviously addressed the shortage of places that we've actually got and to look at various options around Princesses. And one of the areas out for consultation was for Princesses to make use of the Parkland site. As I say, the SEND consultation's now concluded and we're just going through all the responses to that. But I think what this case actually illustrates is that we have a demand for special school places across the city and we haven't got enough places for them, which was the purpose of this SEND consultation, to look how we will be future-proof, looking, you know, five, 10 years down the line to ensure that we've got sufficiency of places. I think Select will be aware is that, the reason why we're trying to do this is that the only alternative is to pay extortionary fees for out-of-borough, non-maintained provision. And I think, you know, I've reported on quite a few times, that fifty-five children in non-maintained, out-of-borough provision is at the cost of almost eight to nine million pounds, the cost to council, they are absolutely extortionate costs. So we need to make sure that we've got the right provision for children in the city, which is one of the reasons to say that we went out to the consultation on sufficiency of places.
Thanks, Jonathan. Tom?
Just to make sure everyone's aware as well, on this specific Princesses using St Anne's Primary, Princesses already have satellite provision, if you like, at other primary schools. It's not like they're suddenly having to expand now. They already have a number of places at Smithdown and some other primaries.
Thanks. And then just one more from me on page sixty. The approval to grant the CCS framework for supermarket vouchers. It was just around the dates. It says the contract awards us for 12 months. The contract sum will be fully funded from COVID local support grant in 2021. I just wondered if we could have the exact dates from and when to. I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's a good spend. It's not critical, I just, is it, you know, because the financial year really is from April to April, not just in 2021, Steve?
Yeah, well, we've had to be quite flexible around some of the COVID support monies to make sure we can use it for the right things. So, because the criteria for how you use it, it can be quite broad. So, and we were given some money for some particular periods of free school meal vouchers and also recently, you'll know, we've had the holiday and food activity weeks as well. So I think what we're trying to do with this is trying to make sure we can stretch access to the free school meal vouchers as far as we can into the future, because some of this funding is fixed term and only linked to COVID, where we can get you the specific amounts and on the timescale.
Okay. Does that mean we will be providing vouchers this Christmas holiday?
Yes, yes, we will be, yeah.
But we cannot say about maybe Easter next year yet.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I really wanted to know. Anybody else? Steve?
Yeah, it was just on that urgent decision around supporting interns. Jonathan and myself met some of the candidates this week and really positive young people and it, just a reminder to ourselves, sort of, post-COVID, because during COVID it's quite hard to get work experience and placements for some of those young people. But I guess it's just a reminder to ourselves as a council and our partners and employees that, you know, they get a wonderful young person, they do need additional support, but, you know, they'll get a wonderful young person who, you know, they want a job, they don't want to be at college anymore, these young people. Just wanted to flag that, thanks.
I couldn't agree more. I think that's one of the better schemes we actually manage and it might be nice if they have any, I don't know, award ceremony or coming out ceremony, if members of the committee could be invited, because it is heartwarming. The progress that the young people make, I think everybody says, don't they, they grow up, they do things that perhaps their parents sometimes don't think they can do, like get on a bus and take themselves to work. You know, it's a fabulous outcome for them and it's always a very good event. So if that could be extended, that would be nice. I've just got one other piece of any other business and I must say, because October's here, I was at the museum, the Liverpool Museum today. I was invited to an event about Jewish contribution to World War One and a fabulous new website that's been set up, which I will share with members probably tomorrow. It's got some fantastic pages where you can just tap on a face and the history of that person will come up quite quickly. It works, it's very functional. But the reason I mention it is because we had pupils from King David there and I think they comported themselves very well and I recommend them for being there. So I think this is the last meeting before Christmas, so thanks to everyone for being in attendance tonight and I wish you all a really happy Christmas and a far better new year. We all deserve a far better new year and a safe journey home. Thank you. Goodbye.